Good evening. School Board meeting is called to order. Would you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Paul.
Here.
And Mrs. Prestia.
Here.
Thank you.
Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am. We need to add a closed session for personnel.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for approval of the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
As modified.
Correction, as modified.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, seconded by Mrs. Brooks of the School Board of the City of Manassas, approve the public meeting agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford.
Eric, thank you for having me here tonight. And yes, I am here to share a wonderful spotlight with you. Good evening, other members of the board, and good evening to everyone that has joined us on tonight. As you know, the Virginia School Boards Association, School Boards Association allows local school boards the opportunity to recognize three, or they invite us to recognize three local businesses for their support of public education, for the work that they do inside of our schools. It's always hard for us to make that determination because we live in such a great community here in Manassas City. And oftentimes, we have many hands that help us to do the work that we do on behalf of our students. But tonight, I'm very honored to present three of our local businesses. I worked very closely with Chris Taylor, our supervisor of CTE for Manassas City Public Schools. She and I discussed a lot of the criteria that the program calls for. And we are honored to present three special people tonight and to assist me in that. Before I read the resolution that the board has put forth for that, Mr. Eric Godwin, who is the CTE Work-Based Learning Specialist, is going to share information about each of the candidates tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I wanted to say it's been an honor to serve in work-based learning this year for the phenomenal Chris Taylor and my friend Tara Eason, who's also our CTE coordinator. It's been an honor and a privilege to be able to implement the work-based learning program as well as to work with our numerous business and community partners around the city. And it's been a true pleasure. The first business that we're going to recognize tonight is going to be Peeden Accounting Services. So, Chris, if you want to go ahead and come up and you can come stand up here. So, Chris Peeden with Peeden Accounting Services has been an extraordinary partner with our CTE programming. Not only does he serve as our MCPS Education Foundation Treasurer, he has spoken to our Cosmetology students about ups and downs of beginning their entrepreneurial journey and offered them a safe space to discuss business practices. He's participated in several years in our Career Connections Program, supporting students' interests in accounting career paths. Mr. Peeden is also a co-organizer for One Million Cups Prince William. He is a staunch advocate for our programs and our students in the community. Mr. Peeden's sense of humor and approachable demeanor has served him well in building a quick rapport with our students. He's an excellent role model for our students. Thank you, Mr. Peeden. On another note, Mr. Peeden was also a very, very valuable person when I started going to One Million Cups Prince William and was very humbling and welcoming every time I go and meet with other industry professionals. Every time I go, he always introduces me to someone new in the room to build another connection with another business partner to better serve our students here in Manassas City. So, thank you, Mr. Peeden. Our next industry professional is going to be Ms. Janay Monroe. So, Janay Monroe is the CEO/Founder of Higher Ground Incorporated and Professionals by Design. Ms. Monroe has worked with our student entrepreneurs as well as our business management students, assisting in formally assessing their talents and future goals while teaching and encouraging workplace readiness skills. Her sponsorship has provided uniform scrubs for our nurse aide and EMT students. She not only sponsored an entrepreneurship scholarship for a cosmetology student, but went a step further to offer a spot in her Starting Your Own Business course this summer. Ms. Monroe has been an exceptional advocate for CTE here in Manassas. She has supported our career events as a member of our CTE Advisory Committee, which I just saw her yesterday, as well as the Manassas City Public Schools Foundation Board. She has a talent for bringing together businesses and partnerships to support our students. Thank you, Ms. Monroe. Our third industry professional is going to be Ms. Julie Holmes with Virginia Tyranado. Co-CEO Ms. Julie Holmes with Virginia Tyranado has been a tremendous partner with the Manassas City Public Schools Career and Technical Education Department through various programs. Virginia Tyranado has generously sponsored a Women in Trades Lunch and Learn for the 2022-2023 school year. This program allows female students to learn firsthand from industry professionals in underrepresented trade fields such as automotive, construction, engineering, and welding. They have also sponsored a field trip for their new training facility in Tyson's Corner, where students enrolled in our Automotive Technology Program, were able to do hands-on activities from industry professionals. They've also participated in our Career Connections Program as well as Career and Conversations Day. We're looking forward to this continued partnership with the hopes of students being employed as youth registered apprentices beginning in the fall. Thank you, Ms. Holmes. We really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Godwin. At this time in your hearing, I would like to read the 2023 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Role Resolution by the Manassas City Public Schools School Board. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of the City of Manassas hereby names Virginia Tyranado Professionals by Design and Peeden Accounting Services to the 2023 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Role, showing appreciation for their ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them. Thank you all so very much for the work that you've done. All right. Thank you all so much. This concludes our spotlights for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. And next up on our agenda this evening is Board Committee Reports. We do not have any committees reporting this evening. And then it will be Citizens Comments. We have no one signed up. Would anybody like to speak during Citizens Comments? Anyone at all? Okay. Moving right along. Consent agenda. May I get a motion?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approves the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Vice Chair Stevens. At the School Board of the City of Manassas, approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Moving right along, onto Discussion Agenda. This evening, we have Student Achievement Updates. Mr. Gaffeler, Executive Director of Student Achievement, and Dr. Jennifer Casada, Director of Strategic Improvement and Accountability, will provide an update on preschool data, PALS data, and accountability timelines as published by the Virginia Department of Education. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Tonight, I'll be providing an update on some year-end data for our preschool and our early literacy. Dr. Casada will then share some information about our Virginia Department of Education Accountability and Accreditation Process, including a timeline for reporting. So, our first data point is from preschool. This slide shows the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Data from the fall of 2022 to the spring of 2023. This assessment focuses on mathematical knowledge. The assessment is administered one-on-one by a teacher and uses visual images and manipulatives to assess what students know in terms of mathematical concepts such as a shape. You will see significant movement in the proportion of students moving into the strong category from the fall to the spring. The next slide shows preschool literacy data. The chart on the left is from the fall of 2022, and the chart on the right is from the spring 2023 assessment. The pre-K literacy screener is also administered one-on-one by a teacher using visual cues and images as well as letters to assess letter recognition. You will see once again that there is significant growth from the proportion of students in the strong category in all four components of the screener: the letter names, letter sounds, syllable segmenting, and beginning sounds expressive. And before I go on to our early literacy PALS data, I do want to just publicly acknowledge Ms. Shayna Batista and Ms. Carrie McDaniel. They are our preschool coordinator and specialist, and they have really helped to build a very strong preschool program here. And we certainly wouldn't see the strong data that we see in the growth without their leadership. And so, I just want to publicly acknowledge them and thank you for being here tonight. And again, prior to starting talking about the PALS data, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Ms. Heather James, who is our coordinator for early literacy. She has worked tirelessly over the last several years to prepare us in looking at reading instruction across the division. And what I will share tonight is a direct correlation to her hard work and her leadership in the division to see the gains that we have had in our PALS literacy data. So, with that, this slide shows the PALS data for students in kindergarten, first, and second grade. This assessment, the Phonological Awareness Literacy Screener, is administered in the fall and in the spring to all students in grades K-1 and 2 with administration for some students in the winter as well. This slide shows the comparison between MCPS and the state in terms of the percent of students meeting and exceeding identified benchmarks in the fall and spring, as well as the difference between the fall and spring. The benchmarks are different in the fall and spring. It's harder in the spring, as well for each of our grade levels. So, the takeaways tonight from this data is that MCPS has showed significant improvement in the percent of students reaching benchmarks at all three grade levels from the fall to the spring. You can see that the gap between MCPS and the state in the spring is significantly smaller at each grade level than in the fall. Also, at grades kindergarten and first grade, the gap between Manassas City and Virginia was only one percentage point. The MCPS strategic target for 2027 is 80% of students meeting the benchmark in the spring of second grade. In 2022, the percent of students was 58%, and in 2023, the percentage has increased to 64%. I also want to point out here in tying the two together of our preschool program to this data, students who attended preschool in Manassas City in 2019-20 and were still in second grade performed at the same level as students that were not in our preschool program. We had 184 students who finished our preschool program here with us that entered and finished second grade with us here. So, it just shows how the two build together and that solid foundation for our preschool program has led to some success moving forward into our second grade. I also want to share, I talked a little bit in the preschool program, how it is administered. For our PALS administration, it is administered in small groups, the group rhyming awareness and the group beginning sound awareness. It's also administered individually. So, we have teachers that are individually meet with students and assess. And then the spelling component of the PALS assessment is done, can be done individually in small groups or the whole class based on teacher discretion in grades first and second. The kindergarten spelling task is typically administered in small groups. So, we can see and celebrate this great growth of our students across kindergarten, first, and second grade. With that, I'm going to ask Dr. Casada to come forward and talk a little bit about the Virginia Department of Education Accountability Timeline and data reporting that will be coming up in the next couple of months.
He's way taller than I am. All right. Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, School Board members, and Dr. Newman, thanks for having me tonight. With the remainder of this presentation, I'm going to provide an update on the state's accountability process, including a timeline. So, as you see on this slide, the state talks about accountability in four different ways. And I like how they distinguish them. And the first is through what they call the School Quality Profiles, which is really the public reporting function. So, it's a way where anybody in the public can go get information about our schools at the state level, at the division level, as well as at the school level to see things. And I'll talk a little bit more in detail on the next slide about what they are, as well as provide a link that's in this presentation for the public to go directly to the School Quality Profiles. The second two functions are really the more accountability functions from the state and federal government in terms of how they designate schools maybe in need of improvement or recognize schools for success. And so, at the state level, we call it accreditation. And at the federal level, it's part of the Every Student Succeeds Act. And so, those reflect the highest priorities. And so, typically, things measured by like the SOL exams. And at the federal level, a lot of the accountability is focused on Title I schools because it's tied to the funding that is provided to those schools. And then finally, at the bottom, you see the Standards of Quality. That's kind of codified in code our expectations for school divisions, including financial expectations. They direct our staffing requirements as well as you must teach the standards of learning, right? The standards of learning are not just assessments. They're the curriculum and the standards for the various curriculum areas in the state. So, it dictates things that need to happen. And as a result, the staffing that's required, other expectations, including things around policies and everything from facilities requirements to strategic planning requirements. So, everything we're doing is in line with those requirements. And so, those standards ensure that school divisions are, have resource, necessary resources in place. And annually, school divisions have to assert that they're in compliance or not with the various components. And if not, have to explain any actions to get there. As I mentioned, the School Quality Profiles are literally like, sort of like a report card, but the state has chosen not to call them a report card for all schools and divisions. And you can see on this slide, there's a variety of types of data that are provided. So, one, the first is accreditation data. That's again, the state system for rating schools, right? And we'll talk more about what that looks like. Then assessments. And so, although assessments are part of accreditation, they're also looked at more purely in terms of the proportion of students passing or failing different SOL assessments, as well as enrollment data. How many students are in our schools? And not just how many, but the demographic breakdown, the grade level breakdown. And they provide some trend and direct comparisons of a school to the division and to the state. So, if you look at Baldwin Elementary, you would see Baldwin's data compared to the division compared to the state for all of these things. College and Career Readiness looks at everything from graduation rates to dropout rates to performance on things like AP exams and certification exams, things like that. Finance is pretty self-explanatory. Learning Climate includes things related to discipline. Teacher Quality looks at teacher experience and qualifications. And then ESA, that's the federal accountability part. And so, a lot of it's the same information, but it's framed under the expectations of the federal government. So, you can look at some things and be like, this looks a little different for the federal page than the state accreditation page? Yes, because there's some different calculations or different expectations for meeting targets. And then finally, School Readiness gets at some of the pre-K things that are there. One of the things is looking at the experience of students coming in from preschool as well as what they call school readiness in terms of the fall PALS data when students enter kindergarten. And so, because PALS is administered statewide and collected statewide, the state can pull that information directly and publish it. However, they have not updated the data for the School Readiness tab in quite a while. But that's up to them to do. That's not something we have any control over. And again, at the bottom, there's a link. And this is posted in Board Docs. And this link is available on our website as well to the School Quality Profile Form in Manassas City Public Schools, from which you can access all of the schools' individual profiles. Sorry. All right. So, now, we're going to talk about accreditation because this is the state system for, again, for rating schools. So, the state includes several things in accreditation. And first, of course, is academic achievement in the areas of English, math, and science. It's important to note that English includes both reading and writing. The state has statewide assessments in writing in both eighth grade and in high school. So, those are combined for middle and high school level. At the elementary and intermediate level, for us, English is just reading. And then, there's achievement gaps. And what this means is the state is looking not just at our overall performance, but the performance of students by group, right? All of our racial and ethnic groups, our English learners, students with disabilities, and our disadvantaged students. And they're expected to meet targets. And I'll show you what those targets are in a moment. And then, they also have a category of a component that's called Student Engagement and Outcomes. One thing is chronic absenteeism. This is something that is a way of, you know, kind of a proxy for student engagement from the state's perspective. And then, the remainder of the three, the remaining three things listed are for the high school only. One is a dropout rate. One is the Graduation and Completion Index, which is not exactly the graduation rate because it gives, it's a weighted index. And so, students who graduate are weighted at a full 100 points on their index. But the schools get credit for keeping kids in school who may not graduate in four years but are taking a little bit of extra time. You get credit for that. You get credit, some points, lesser points for students earning a GED, for example. And that's part of accreditation. As well as, there's something new this year. It's been on, it's been in the works for a long time and was delayed a few years because of COVID. And it's called the College, Career, and Civic Readiness Index, which is a mouthful. But it looks at not just are our students graduating, but what proportion of them are, have either done something like taken AP, IB, or dual enrollment class. So, in Manassas City, that's AP or dual enrollment. Or earn a CTE, be a CTE finisher, which is not as simple as just one class, but it's completing a sequence. Or participate in service learning or work-based learning. There's a variety of and ors. And so, there's a target for students doing one or more of these things. And so, this is the first year that this will be part of the ratings for high schools across Virginia. Okay. So, all schools are going to be assigned an accreditation rating this coming year, which the ratings, kind of, the school year goes a year forward, right? They release the ratings in the fall. And so, they're the ratings for '23-'24, but they're based on '22-'23 data. That can cause sometimes some confusion, but that's how they do their ratings. And the federal ratings are done the same way. So, they seem to be a year ahead. And then, the performance levels are determined in two ways, right? So, they're determined by the current year, so how our students perform in '22-'23, or an average of usually the previous three years. But again, COVID threw a little bit of a wrench in that also because there were two years that there were no accreditation ratings. So, you'll see here that for three-year rates, video is going to combine 2018, 19, and then the last two years for that three-year average. Because in 2019-20, there were no assessments. In 2021, there were, the participation across the state was very low because of the proportion of students attending virtually. And those assessments have to be administered in person. One caveat to that is chronic absenteeism is only going to be using the current rate this year because the state deemed last year that the data were unreliable because, you know, across the state, so across the nation, so many students would be sent home for 10 days or classrooms would be shut down. So, it was, the data were published, but were not included as an accreditation factor. This year, it will be, but only this year. One thing, that's also important to note because the next bullet talks about another way schools can move up a level in terms of accreditation is if a school has maybe not met the set target but has demonstrated improvement from one year to the next. You can get credit for that. But for chronic absenteeism, that won't apply because it's only using the current year's data. And y'all talk about the levels in just a second. And then, also, there's levels one, two, and three for each indicator. And you're allowed to move up. However, you're not allowed to stay at one of them for too long. If you're at level two for four years in a row, it moves you to level three. Like, you can't just live there. Even if you're making a little bit of improvement, you have to get up to level one. That's the expectation. All right. This is the nerdy part of the presentation. So, accreditation scores. If you look across the different tabs of the School Quality Profile, remember I said you might see different numbers? Doesn't mean something's wrong. It just means it's a different look at the same things. So, in accreditation, so on the Assessments page, you see pass rates, right? So, students passing a test. Few little asterisks here and there. For example, if a student's not in the school for a certain portion of the year, which is like more than half the year, which is not actually that many of our students, they might come out of that. might come out of that. For accreditation, the scores are adjusted. What does that mean? That means that it's, instead of a general pass rate, there's something called the combined rate, meaning a school gets credit for students passing a test, or a student who may not pass the test but is an English learner who demonstrates significant progress in learning English, or a student who has shown growth as measured from one SOL exam, spring of '22 to spring of '23. Clear as mud, I know. Then the next thing that's included is a calculation they call remediation recovery. Basically, if a student who fails an exam, say a student fails third grade math, and then participates in a targeted remediation program, you've heard various times through the year about our targeted support block, so our students who are identified, they participate in that. If they then pass the SOL in the spring of fourth grade, you get kind of extra credit for that, catching, bringing kids up, catching them up. Does that make sense? And then also, there's some adjustments taking into account things like students who've been in the United States or in Virginia public schools for less than a certain amount of time. If they don't pass or show growth or progress, their scores are adjusted out of an accreditation calculation, or students who've transferred in to the division after a certain point in time. So I say all of these things to show that's why an accreditation score for a school may look significantly higher than a pass rate. It's due to these things that the state's including. You may recall, several months ago, I was here talking about some proposals the state had for accreditation moving forward. We don't have any information yet on long-term decisions. The state did make the decision to keep absenteeism in part of the accreditation calculations for this year, but we don't know that other proposals they've talked about are not settled yet. So I'm talking about the ratings for this year, but I don't know what's coming after this year's ratings. I know there's great interest at the state level of changing things, tightening some things up in terms of the improvement definitions, but I don't have any further information at this time. Okay. So I talked about that combined rate. This slide provides, this is a slide provided really directly from the state, and it shows you how that looks in practice, right? So pretend we had a class of 10 students on a reading test, and six of them passed, as shown by the green people on the slide. So that would be a 60% pass rate on an assessment. But say we have one more student who didn't pass, but showed growth from second grade to third grade, third grade to fourth grade, and so on. Now that the state's assessments are on a vertical scale, this measurement of growth is much more precise than it used to be. So then you'd get credit for that student. And then you say you have one more student who didn't pass, either didn't have an SOL score the year before, or didn't show that growth, but is an English learner who showed significant progress in learning English as measured on the access test, then you'd get credit for that in the accreditation calculation. So that combined rate goes up to 80%, okay? So that's again, how you can see even in that example, how a pass rate would be 60%. The accreditation score is 80%, and it's because that's just a different look at the same thing. So the next two slides provide some detail about what the targets are from the state in terms of each of the accreditation indicators. And this first slide is all about the academic achievement ones. So you see English, math, and science. Difference for math and science, the target is 70% or higher, of course, is the benchmark. In English, it's 75%. So the target for English is a 75% combined rate. Part of that is because you get two extra ways to get there, right? The growth as well as English learner progress. But you will see in Level Two, even though the math and science benchmarks are at 70 instead of 75, the Level Two benchmark is still 65. It is not any lower, even though the Level One target is lower. And then you can see Level Three is anything 65% or lower. Achievement gaps, it's the same targets. What that then means, though, is it's that target for each of the student groups, okay? So each of the student groups are expected to meet those same targets. But the way the state does the ratings combines those groups, and you get, depending, you may have one group that's not at Level One, and you can still be at Level One. You have one group that's at Level Three, and you can still be at Level Two. You cannot be at Level One if you have any of the groups at Level Three. Okay. All right. Finally, the next slide, not finally, but the next slide shows you the other accreditation indicators. These are the ones that are either unique to high school or the chronic absenteeism one. And these just show you the targets for those various indicators. There's little notations there that show you, again, I talked about improvement, right? For pass rates, they're calculated one way. For graduation and dropout, they're calculated slightly differently, because the proportions are based on something different than a pass rate. And then again, you can see the College and Career Readiness Indicator, one is new. The chronic absenteeism one is one for us to pay attention to. That Level One target is 15% or lower. Level Two is 15 to 25%. There are going to be a lot of schools statewide that are in that and/or hoping to not be at Level Three. This slide shows you a nice little matrix that the state has that defines the different categories and ratings for accreditation. You may hear the phrase "fully accredited" thrown around. That used to be the label for a school that was fully accredited. They've changed it, and now it's accredited if all of the indicators are at Level One or Level Two. A school is accredited with conditions if any indicator is at Level Three. Like, that's a big indicator, like English achievement or English achievement gaps, et cetera. If a school continues to stay at accreditation with conditions for too long, then that's when accreditation denied comes in. So you can only be conditionally accredited for, you know, a few years. Once you're accredited with conditions, there are requirements from the state for things like an academic review that can be conducted locally at first, and then with state oversight. Even when locally, we have meetings with the state to talk about the expectations. There's lots of training, and then follow-up visits and a report that has to be done, and then reviewed by the state. And then any new school, which we don't have, is awarded one-year period, because they don't have data yet. So they don't, they can't have a rating their first year. All right. So, almost done. I'm going to end tonight with the data release timeline from the state. So these are those dates that are shared by the state. Caveat, the state has been known to change them in the past. So, so far, they haven't changed them for this year, but that has happened in the past. Individual scores for students obviously are available right away. So people say, well, why does it take so long for these ratings to occur? Well, there's several reasons. One, even the pass rates for a school are not dependent just on the SOLs. They include the alternative assessments, the VAP, which are portfolio-based. So they take longer to score. They're hand scored, and the scoring for those often happens after all of those are done statewide, okay? And there's cleaning up of data. People say, well, what does that mean? Well, some students take the test more than once, right? A student takes the test and takes a retake, making sure that the right score is included in the calculation. So we submit our end-of-year data to the state in terms of enrollment, and they have to match that up with the state testing data files in order to do their calculations. Schools are looking, this doesn't mean schools are sitting around waiting to look and make decisions about instruction until these publicly released data happen. The schools know how their students are doing. It's just for public accountability, we need to ensure that, you know, the data are clean, and we wait until the state. Again, the date reflects when they're going to be releasing them. So you see here, first, as of July 24th, they lock everything. No changes can be made. As we continue to look, there's nothing you can do after that point. Until that point, if there's something that was wrong, there was a coding error, for example, so folks across the state look closely at the data to make sure there's nothing in terms of a student's grade level, for example, any of those things, up to that point, and then it's locked. And then they will share preliminary pass rates with divisions to take a look, and then they update them and publish them for the public on August 17th. So in August, there's going to be a pass rate discussion for all of you at one of your August school board meetings, where all of that information will be shared, and it'll be posted for the public. And then that's the first phase, right? And so that's pass rates. And then you move into the accreditation phase. We can start to see things in early September. You go, well, why does that take longer? Well, accreditation in terms of the graduation component includes summer school. And some schools across the division are doing summer school into August, later into August, even then we might be starting, right? Because schools across the divisions, across the state start at varying times. So they will then do a news release on accreditation in September. Even then, it still won't include the graduation piece. But then they do that a week later. So in October, we're going to do another presentation to you that will include those pieces, the accreditation ratings of all of our schools, as well as an annual report on the strategic plan that weaves all of that in, since accreditation is one of the goals in the strategic plan. That's it. Thank you. I thought I had a grand conclusion. I did not.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. I'm really glad you're in charge of all this data and are on it. Any questions from the board? Comments?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say thank you for the update and, you know, for making sure that this is going smoothly and everything you guys do to keep it going.
Malsi?
Yes, and I absolutely ditto Mrs. Brooks's comments. I want to remind everybody, I believe it was this exact same time last year when the state wanted to add the College, Career, and Civic Readiness Index for this year's ratings, and they did not give us any leeway on time. And we had to put together a plan and make sure we complied with what the state needed us to comply with, and I would just want to congratulate all of you for doing that. I've seen it. I've seen how much every single one of you have worked out in the community to specifically get the Career and Civic Readiness piece of this puzzle together in such a quick, such a quick time. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Bresia.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm going to try to get through this without coughing. Sorry, everybody. But I love the growth. I love seeing double-digit growth. That's, that's great. That's very exciting. I did want to talk a little bit about our second graders, because they had a lot of growth, but they had a lower starting point in the fall. So they were in pre-K, if they went to pre-K for 2019, 20, which means that their 2021 school year was kindergarten, and that was remote.
Correct.
And so the fact that they are, as close as they are, is really quite something, having missed a year. I mean, it was virtual instruction, but kindergarten's a tough year to do virtually, so.
Sure.
So I did want to spotlight them a little bit, and they're on the right target. I'm going to be eager to see how they do once they're in, you know, their third grade, starting third grade this year.
If I could just add, Ms. Bresia, you know, in last year, when we were sending whole classes home for quarantine.
Right.
And so there was interruption. But I also want to highlight that second grade data is higher than pre-pandemic data. So while we had that data this year, and it is lower comparatively, they are actually, our second graders achieved higher than what we did in 18, 19. And so that is pretty remarkable.
We're going in a very good, solid direction.
Yes.
You're going to spoil us. We're going to start expecting 20 points of growth for everyone. So, and the other thing I wanted to address was accreditation. We currently have two schools that are accredited with conditions. They have been accredited with conditions for one year, but if we stay there for too long, then we, then accreditation becomes denied. So how long do we, I wanted some discussion about how much long, how long we have.
How long? So typically, if a school's got a rating of accredited with conditions, you get that rating for three years, you can have that rating for three years, and then in the fourth year. There are some things that can be done to intervene if you're showing enough progress, but it involves conversations between the superintendent and the state, right? But we're not there yet. And so the other part, and why I pause, is that there's also different indicators. And so things, if something bounces out and then bounces back down, so the overall rating, that's how it works. But you could have a school that was not overall accredited with conditions, but has had Level Two for too long, and we're not there yet with any of our schools. But typically, it's three years, and the fourth year, the state says four years, but it's been sometimes right away at four years. They're like, no, if they've not seen anything change in terms of practices at the schools. The interventions get progressively more intense from the state. If you remain in those levels, they come and visit you, and they expect more tangible change, you know? So you already have to provide your school improvement plan to the state when they're in accredited with conditions, and link essential actions from your academic review, and they want to see them. You have to tell them what page it's on in the school's plan, and what you're doing, and report on progress. And so then the next year, they would go back to what you've sent them and say, hey, you said this, what is your, you know? And if your data don't improve there, it would dig deeper. But what's nice lately is the approach the state's taken has been very collaborative and partnership-based. So they're building those relationships with, which would then help. But so, that's kind of a little rambly, but I hope that addresses what you're getting at.
Right. Well, I was just, I wanted to also make clear, there are two schools that are accredited with conditions. They are on year one of that status.
Accredited with conditions.
So we, I mean, of course, I want all of our schools to be fully accredited. Everybody here in this room does, but we do have, we're not in any danger of slipping into the third category that you were discussing, the, you know, accreditation denied category at this stage of the game. We are taking care of that.
Well, there's, I mean, the schools are working really hard, and there's partnerships from central office to work particularly with the high school, where the dropout rate has, continues to, has been a challenge and continues to be a challenge. So that's the highest priority in terms of the number of, you know, the years, but the improvement had happened, but it will slip during the COVID time, so.
Right.
We're hopeful for improvement, so.
Gotcha. And I have a strict, like, easy question. I noticed on the accredited, accreditation indicators worksheet that you had there, it was a combined rate for math, which, and a combined rate for reading, which you did a good job explaining what that meant. And then I noticed for science, it was just a strict.
And I'm really glad you asked that question, because I should have said it. And so accreditation for science, because there's only a science test at grade five and at grade eight, and then content-specific in high school, there's not a way for growth to be shown, because there's not one assessment and then another assessment the next year. And in math, the combined rate only includes growth from one year to the next. It does not include the English learner progress. That's only in reading, so it's kind of a cascading thing. So that's why in science. And then also, the growth does not apply at high school, other than from eighth grade to Algebra I, because each content is differentiated, and because now students, once they earn verified credits, don't take the subsequent tests. So the high school scores are a little different than they used to be.
I see. That's clarifying. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Spall?
Yes, I just want to, lots of times during school board member comments, we say thank you to the staff for all of their hard work, but I wanted to make sure that we said tonight, you know, we, Mr. Gaffeler, Dr. Casada, we get to see you guys fairly often, but I also want to thank the preschool leadership team and the early literacy, Heather James, for the great information. It's really a good job. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you, Chair. We've seen this data before. It has been presented to us recently, and so we did have some conversation about it. When you were going over the PALS data, Mr. Gaffeler, what I saw was our rate of growth here in Manassas City Public Schools for kindergarten, first and second grade PALS is a higher rate of growth than statewide.
Correct. We have, we are accelerating faster than the state.
What do you, is there any one thing you would attribute to it, or are there multiple factors you would attribute to that?
Well, I would be remiss, Vice Chair. You know, I think there's a couple of things. You know, our focus on instruction, obviously, it's a cycle that works, the collaboration between teachers and looking at what, what we're doing with students. I also, at a previous board meeting, we talked about our targeted support block, and so during that time, we have focused on literacy, primarily in the, in the primary grades, where 30 minutes each day, our teachers are coming together, regrouping kids based on need, and providing very focused instruction on areas of need for students to move them forward. So I guess, a long story short, would be, I would say there's multiple things. It's not just a one thing and a one-size-fits-all, but it has really been looking at how are we meeting the needs of individual kids and responding in a way that makes the most sense to provide the most support for our students.
Because when, and you may be able to explain this a little bit better than I can, but when we look at PALS data, PALS data at second grade is predictive of later school success, correct?
Yes.
And it's, there's a strong correlation between the two.
Correct.
So looking at this PALS data, it's, it gives us good reason to be optimistic for our youngest learners.
Absolutely. You know, when you look at, at the PALS data, you're looking at foundational skills. So if we can, and we know that if we can get students on grade level by third grade, that is indicative of how they will do in their later formative years. So, you know, while I mentioned, second grade as well is above pre-pandemic levels, our kindergarten is also significantly above pre-pandemic levels. They had 83% of our students that met the benchmark as compared to, in the 70s in 18, 19. So there's lots of reason to be hopeful. But what I will also tell you is this, this data has not happened by accident. It has been very intentional, from everyone down, focused on the right things, our instructional facilitators, our, our reading support. The board supported last year putting reading support teachers into the budget for this year. And so our reading support teachers have been working with small groups of students throughout the day in all of our elementary schools, our middle schools, and our intermediate schools. And we also had a reading specialist at the high school this year. And so there has been very intentional efforts made to move students forward.
And so our efforts, when it comes to literacy, from preschool all the way through high school, does that fall into that, that new legislation, the science of reading? Is that kind of the blueprint we're following?
The Virginia Literacy Act, focusing on the science of reading, we will have to be into full compliance with that by the 24, 25 school year. And what I can tell you is, and again, I can't say enough, but Heather James has positioned us very well, because she started thinking this way several years ago, in terms of how we're, we're looking at students. We have, our, our teachers are Orton-Gillingham trained, IMSC trained, the multisensory training and looking at the science of reading, which is very much a part of the Virginia Literacy Act. So I would say that we are very well-positioned, and we are ahead of the game in talking to colleagues at other districts to where we are in terms of how we are responding to that particular piece of legislation and moving forward.
That's great. Looking at our littlest people, the early literacy, how do, how does this year's growth compare to prior years? That's great. Looking at our littlest people, the early literacy, how do, how does this year's growth compare to prior years? Is it similar to what we saw with that PALS data?
Yeah, I would say that our data is very strong compared to previous years. I don't have the actual numbers in front of me, but I can tell you that I think the acceleration of growth this year compared to previous years is right in line with what we're seeing in early literacy.
Yeah, because it, I mean, it looks really good. I can't do the numbers quite as well on that one because of the way the graph is done. But I mean, it looks really good when you've got so many students who've gone from that beginning to that strong indicates a lot of growth.
Right. I would also add, Ms. Stevens, when we look at the, the class observations and looking at our preschool, we, we are ahead of the game there, thanks to Ms. Batista and Ms. McDaniel, where we had the state come and observe our classrooms and rate our teachers and rate our instruction and how we're doing that. And they compile that data for us. And we are, compared to the state, we are ahead of the state in terms of how they rated our preschool classrooms compared to the classrooms across the state. So again, I think that those things all go hand in hand with the data that we're seeing and the growth that we're seeing in our preschool.
That's awesome. That's wonderful. I'm going to bother Dr. Casada, just for like two, three questions. When we look at Slide 9, where it says, "Schools can receive a higher performance level indicator if they demonstrate improvement from one cycle to a next, to the next." What, how do, how is the video you defining improvement? Because improvement's a really vague term.
Okay, that's a good question. And so this could be a whole presentation on itself, but I'll do Reader's Digest. So like, in the achievement areas, right? So they look at a reduction in the failure rate. And the reason they look at a reduction in the failure rate rather than just increasing the pass rate is that you have to improve more if you're lower down on the scale. So if you improve, you reduce the failure rate by 10%. And that's compared to, the federal government has done the same thing as well when they would have the AYP or AMO targets. That was another way to reach them. And so that R10 is the designation you hear, and that's where that comes from. For graduation and for the graduation index, it's, it's how many, you can improve by a certain number of points on that index. For dropout, it's reducing it by a certain number of points, because they're a little different. So they define specifics. There is talk, right? When I came a few months ago, there's talk about how they want to redefine what improvement is, and maybe make that a little bit harder moving forward, but they haven't defined that yet. And they haven't established what they mean other than they want to change it. So stay tuned. I keep looking, but they haven't updated it yet.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
And then on Slide 12. Slide 12 is the slide with the accreditation indicators. And we look at the box, Achievement Gaps, English Reading and Writing, 75% or higher. What exactly, are those the group, the students in those specific
Yeah, so each group.
that each subgroup is 75% or higher?
Yes, that's what that means.
Okay.
And again, or, right? Or showing that improvement, or if the student group is smaller than a certain number, it doesn't, it doesn't count, because those numbers can be very volatile if we have a very small number of students. And so they won't report if it's below a certain number, and then you're not accountable, other than, again, all students are part of the whole group, right? So we're clearly accountable for all, but that's how that works.
So will some students be in more than one achievement gap group?
Absolutely. So a student who is an English learner, who is also Hispanic, who is also disadvantaged, would be in each of those groups, yes.
So they could count three times?
Or four, you know, or five, if they're also a student with a disability. We have, we have all of those combinations as possible. Student is in one racial or ethnic group only, is in the all group, and then could be in any of the others in any combination.
I, I'm glad I don't have to do the math for all that, because it just, now, let me, and this is very much so a hypothetical question. I know that last year, when the science SOL was administered in eighth grade, the science SOL in middle school comprises sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. What they've learned in all three grades comprised. And I know that across the state, there were a number of middle schools that were accredited with conditions because of that science pass rate. So my question for you, if a school one year is accredited with conditions for their science SOL pass rate, but then the next year, they're in the green for that pass rate, but they're in the yellow for like chronic absenteeism, do they start back at year one, or are they still at year two?
Okay, so, easy version of that one. You said easy questions, and there, everything is nuanced with this, right? So if a school is accredited with conditions because they're at Level 3 for science, you have to be at Level 3
Okay, Level 3, I'm sorry.
Right, so then the red for science. And then they're no longer in the red for science, then they'd be at Level 1. However, if they then are in Level in the red for something else, they would still be accredited with conditions. The timeline for science stops, right? You're out of Level 3, you're up to Level 1 or 2. That timeline is then different, but you're still accredited with conditions. That's where it gets tricky, back to Ms. Bresia's question about the timeline, is there's, they put out timelines for accredited with conditions to accreditation denied, but if you've moved indicators, they've had conversations in the past. And again, they're evolving on what this is going to look like moving forward. So I don't know what it's going to mean for future decisions beyond this fall.
Well, thank you. I, thank you for all that information, because this can be very confusing to look at and to understand how this process occurs and all of the different factors that play in. And it's never just as much as X percent passed this year means that the school is doing well, or the school division is doing well. There are just so many other factors that are involved, and it's an ever-changing.
And that's why, if you go back to the slide with the, the circles on it, right? There's different ways to look at accountability.
Right.
And that's why they, each one of those calculations can be different, and it doesn't mean anything's wrong, and it doesn't mean someone's lying if they say, well, this is this pass rate, and this is this score. They can both be right. They're just different, different lenses through which we're looking.
Thank you. Thank you for, for the clarity and the explanation and, and the PowerPoint that really breaks everything down for us. I really appreciate it, and I think we all do. Thank you.
And I'll just wrap things up with, thank you for the presentation. It was great to see the leadership acknowledged here tonight. And I'd also like to give a high five to all those little young learners that are reaching their blue and striving for blue, and to the teachers for their CLTs and working together to make, to effectuate this change. Thank you. Our next agenda item is school board members' comments, and I'll go to Mr. Hollingsworth first.
Well, then I'm just going to echo Chair's sentiment and just say thank you to the faculty for your hard work and your commitment to a cycle that works. Seeing these trends moving forward are an example of your commitment, and I just want to take a moment to recognize you and thank you for your efforts. Also want to, again, say thank you and congratulations to our VSB A 2023 Business Honor Roll, who are the honor roll
Recipients.
recipients. So again, thank you, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bresia?
The Virginia Honor Roll recipients were also on my list of acknowledgements. You know, thank you. Thank you so much to all of your support of the Manassas City students, Manassas City schools, you know, our incredible CTE team, our preschool team, every, you know, everybody here assembled, you know, thank you all for your hard work. And I hope everyone's enjoying their summer. Like, let's not forget that it is a time for enjoyment. So I hope everyone's getting the break that they need. You know, we had, I had my very first school board retreat this past week, which I really enjoyed the chance to get to know my colleagues and, you know, for us to work together in that kind of environment. I look forward to future retreats and making them even better going forward. So that's all from me.
Thank you. Mrs. Ball?
Yes, I just wanted to say, we've seen from the Skills USA team that went to states, but we, some of us were at the city council meeting last night, so I just wanted to give them a shout out, that the Skills USA were represented last evening, and cadets from the Police Academy as well. Offer everyone a happy Fourth of July, and just follow up by saying that we do appreciate the Virginia Honor Roll recipients. And, you know, what's really nice is to see that they're presenting or serving in other capacities. So thank you for your work on the Education Foundation, and the Women in Trades Initiative is very exciting. Great to see the fall of spring growth with PALS data. So thank you for everyone and for all your intentional efforts. We are very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
I'll keep this very short, but I, I just, in my comments, of course, everybody's already said everything, pretty much. However, I just want to point out that the growth we're having in our school systems, it takes everybody. It takes more than just a teacher. I heard reading specialist, support teacher, we have intentional efforts, work-based learning. We've got people that, that need to support that effort. There's so many positions involved in teaching each of our children. And I feel that, and I'm saying this for a reason, because we're getting ready to have a joint meeting with city council. And I, it really does take every single one of you, not just, not just a certified teacher. And every single one of us is, is, is a part of this family and helps our children grow. And if we don't nurture our students now, we won't have the leaders tomorrow. And I think it's important that we recognize that. And tonight, that's all I've got. Have a great summer.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the presentation again. It's really great to see all the wonderful growth that our little kiddos are having, and, you know, see how you guys are keeping them engaged. I also want to say congratulations to Peadon Accounting, the Virginia Tire and Auto, and Professionals by Design. Your wonderful, you know, attributes to our community, and your support of our school community is greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. I want to build on what Ms. Williams said. In fact, I wrote down something very similar. There's that old saying, "It takes a village to raise a child. It takes a village to teach a child." And when we look at this growth, it's clear that our village is working together, and that every member of the village plays a role, and it's a necessary role. Our teachers can't be successful without support staff. Everyone who works with our students, from the top down, the bottom up, is a member of the village, and every one of those members deserves our thanks. And to our fabulous Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll recipients, you're members of that village as well. The work you do, the time you put in, the effort and the dedication, is what helps our students today become successful, well-rounded adults tomorrow, and strong contributors to our community and our society. So we really appreciate the time and the effort that you all put in to the work you do with our kids. I know they appreciate it, and we appreciate it. And so thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Have a good summer. Have a safe summer. Summer school is going on, so watch out for school buses and kids of all shapes, ages, and sizes, because they're out there and they're learning. And one of the cool things that's going on is, summer school at the lower, lower levels is project-based. And I know that at Baldwin Elementary, they're going on weekly field trips throughout Old Town Manassas. So if you see a bunch of elementary kids, they're on a field trip. This week, I believe, is the farmer's market, so they are looking forward to it. They're going to get a presentation from the person who's in charge of the farmer's market. So it's going to be fun, and I know Chair Seberg has already been out to some of the summer school classes. So thank you for doing that. I know they had a good time.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And so I'll carry on with that. Today, I visited the fifth graders at Mayfield Intermediate, the Rising Fifth Graders, for their summer school program. And I spoke to them about myself.
I think they're Rising Fifth Graders.
Okay.
Yep.
And I spoke with them about being on the school board and what this role entails. And I did assign them some homework. So if there are any parents out there with students in the Rising Fifth Graders summer school, have them ask you about school board and what role you as a parent can play. I also want to make an announcement that City Book Club meeting's coming up. It's going to be at Manassas City Library. The book that we're reading is A Forever Family by Rob Shear. It's about foster care and children at risk, and how our community can play a part in supporting social services. On the panel, we will have representatives from social services, myself, Councilman Smith, who serves on the Social Services Advisory Committee. It will be Saturday, July 29th, at 1:30 PM at the Manassas City Library. And this is the grown-ups component of the Altogether Now Summer Reading theme. And then lastly, I'd like to, but not least, last but not least, I'd like to thank my fellow school board members for your participation in our school board retreat last week. And it was a great time. We've learned a lot, and we're going to move forward, going strong, and keep learning, always learning. And with that, I will take a motion for our closed session.
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter, P E R S 2223-0079.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks. That the school board of the city of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings, allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter, P E R S 2223-0079. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. We are in closed session. Thank you all for coming tonight.